Let the record reflect that we have reconvened with all members present. As we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I will ask you to remain standing.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Just two weeks ago, they had asked for a moment of silence shortly after the Dallas tragedy, and that following Sunday, yet again, tragedy struck in Baton Rouge. And as I, just becoming a loss for words, I've, I've found that probably not a better way to say it than as President Obama did in an open letter to law enforcement across his country. I have edited this to some of the key parts, but again, a letter from President Obama to law enforcement across the country. To brave members of our nation, law enforcement community, every day you confront danger so it does not find our families, carry burdens, you carry burdens as a, so they do not fall on us, and courageously meet test after test to keep us safe. Like Dallas Officer Lauren Arons, who brought dinner to a homeless man the night before he died, you perform good deeds beyond the call of duty and out of the spotlight. Time and again, you make split-second decisions that could mean life and death for you and many others in harm's way. You endure the tense minutes and long hours over lifetimes of service. Every day you accept this responsibility as you see your colleagues do their difficult, dangerous jobs with equal valor. I want you to know that the American people see it too. We recognize it, we respect it, we appreciate it, and we depend on you. And just as your tight-knit law enforcement family feels the recent losses to your core, our nation grieves alongside you. Any attack on the police is unjustified attack on all of us. As the President continued, "I've spent a lot of time in law enforcement over the past couple of weeks. I know each of you takes tragedies personally, and each is as devastating as a loss to your own family. Sunday shooting in Baton Rouge was no different. Together we mourned Montrel Jackson, Matthew Gerald, and Brad Garofalo. Each was a husband, each was a father, each was a proud member of his community, each fallen officer is one too many. Some are trying to use this moment to divide the police and community you serve. I reject those efforts, for those do not reflect reality. Officer Jackson knew this too, when just days ago, he had asked us to keep the hatred from our hearts. Instead, he offered to protestors, to fellow police officers alike, to hug anyone who saw him in the street. He offered himself as a fellow worshiper to anyone who sought to pray. Today, we offer comfort in our prayers to his family and to Gerald's and the Garofalos and the tight-knit Baton Rouge law enforcement community. As you continue to defend us with quiet dignity, we proudly, we loudly, excuse me, we proclaim loudly our appreciation for the acts of service you perform as part of your daily routine. When you see civilians at risk, you don't see them as strangers, you see them as your own family, and you lay your life on the line for them. You put others' safety before your own, and you remind us that loving our country means loving one another. Even when some protest you, you protect them. What is more professional than that? What is more patriotic? What is prouder example of our most basic freedoms, to speech, to assemble, to life, to liberty? And at the end of the day, you have the right to go home to your family, just like anyone else. We are at our best when we recognize our common humanity, set an example for our children, and trust the responsibility, and honor our sacrifices of our bravest by coming together to be better. Thank you for your courageous service." Just a moment of reflection and prayer for those in that need. Thank you. I have a motion for the executive minutes of July 11, 2016.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Very. Motion for the regular minutes of July 11, 2016.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Greetings to the public. Welcome all. Again, apologize, running a little late today. Thank you for coming out of the stormy night. And for the first time in a month, we are back to full strength here, so everyone has recharged batteries and back to work. Just a report from the library. The library is continuing its busy schedule of summer programming. Over 600 children participated in a summer reading program. The teen and adult reading programs are popular, and the programming has attracted many people. And Touch a Truck, sponsored by the Friends of the Library in cooperation with Madison Area YMCA and Madison Rotary Club, will be held this Saturday in the grounds of the library and the YMCA. The hours are from 10 to 3, rain or shine. There will be a full display of trucks to explore, free magic shows, Lionel O'Gage Train Show with new and antique railroad memorabilia, face painting and balloons. The trucks will be displayed in the YMCA parking lot and on Keep Street. Parking will not, will be available in the municipal lot and the library parking lot, but not in the YMCA lot. We appreciate the cooperation received by, from the mayor and council and all the borough departments in making Touch a Truck a great event. So if you've never been to it, it is fun for all ages, so put that in your calendar. And that is all I have, and now on to reports from committees. Utilities, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. As I'm sure you all remember, on July 14, we had a microburst storm, which passed through quickly but caused a fair amount of damage. And the electric crew was out all night in what was a very, as you may recall, warm and humid evening. They made all the repairs. The outages ended up being small and localized, and it was caused largely by downed trees and branches. So yet again, we benefit from having our own electric department. We were up in short order, unlike some of our neighboring communities. The electric department has continued new construction of a primary feeder on Britton Street and Walnut Street. They installed a new pole on Greenwood Avenue. They made streetlight repair service upgrades and satisfied a number of markup requests. As for the water department, they continue to take state-mandated test samples for chloroform e coli volatile organic compounds. It's an ongoing process, and it's an assurance that what we're drinking is healthy for us. There were 47 requests for locating and marking underground utilities. There was turnoff of service in one location, and a number of other meter-related actions were taken. And one of the key issues was that the water main for the KRE project was tested for bacteria. We're currently awaiting results. There was a low-pressure problem on Longview, for those of you who live there, I'm sure you know, and there was a cloudy water problem at Community Place Complex, and both of those were resolved. There was also some running water on the curb on Pomeroy, and it turned out to be a leak on the house side, but again, resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Cattinello.
I have no report this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you. Third-quarter tax bills were mailed out two weeks ago with a payment due date of August 1. Residents should note the short turnaround time. The borough's number 10-day grace period will apply. As in years past, these bills will include the final payments for the third and fourth quarter of this year and preliminary payments for the first and second quarter of next year. Residents that are way between now and August 10 can pay their property taxes online at any time from anywhere by logging on to www.rosenet.org and clicking online bills. Make sure you have your bank account and routing number ready, as well as your property block and lot number. Division of Taxation will start mailing the property tax reimbursement PTR checks on July 15 of this year to those applicants that file by June 1. The PTR is more commonly known as the Senior Freeze Program, where eligible seniors and disabled residents can receive property tax relief from the state of New Jersey. The deadline to file for 2015 has been extended to October 17, 2016. Applicants whose 2015 income did not exceed $70,000 are eligible to receive a reimbursement payment, provided they meet all the necessary requirements. If you have any questions about your reliability, please call the Division of Taxation at 800-882-6597. And finally, tax sales. Property tax owners who have not paid their 2015 water, electric, or tax bill in full are subject to a tax sale and lien being placed on their property. The borough will only accept cash, certified check, or money-order payments for these amounts. In order to avoid advertisement of your property in the newspaper, the full payment must be received before August 11, 2016. The tax sale is set for Wednesday, September 14 at 10:00 a.m. And finally, a special thanks to the tax collection and utility billing staff who have worked together to remind utility owners and property owners of their obligations. As it stands right now, we expect to have very few properties going on tax sale in September. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a report from the Police Department. On July 7, Class 2 Special Police Officer Vincent Galgano started the Madison Police Field Training Program and also attended School Resource Officer Training for his upcoming SRO assignment. Vincent Galgano is a retired police officer from Dover Police Department and brings a wealth of knowledge to his new assignment. On July 12, the Madison Police Department started to install the e-ticketing system, electronic summons generation, in their patrol vehicles. This platform will lessen officer, dispatcher, and court staff data entry related to motor vehicle summonses. It will also increase efficiency in not only the Police Department, but the court as well. The system will increase officer safety because P-ticket generation will no longer be handwritten, which forces an officer to look down for several minutes. This project was funded through the DWI grant with no impact on our budget. On July 14, Patrolman Morales and Corporal Gangalves attended the funeral for murdered Dallas Police Officers Patricio Zarampita, who was one of the five officers gunned down on July 7. Both officers were flown to Dallas, Texas by JetBlue Airlines for a charge. Unfortunately, less than a week later, Corporal Boone and Patrolman Bjornes flew to Baton Rouge, Louisiana to attend the funerals for murdered police officers Montrel Jackson, Brad Garofola, and Matthew Gerard. JetBlue once again flew officer from the country, around, from around the country to attend the funerals of these fallen heroes. From the Fire Department. Fire Department had a very busy month, month of July so far. The excessive heat and humidity has compounded the job working in turnout gear much more strenuous. As far, so far in July, the Fire Department has responded to 69 fire incidents and 23 medical calls, for a total of 92 calls for assistance. On Saturday morning, July 16, at 7:43 a.m., the Madison Fire Department, along with Chatham and Green Village Fire Departments, were dispatched for mutual and aid assistance into Chatham Township to a confirmed residential working structure fire at 52 Pembroke Road. Madison firefighters were assigned as the RIC team and later assisted with overhaul and ventilation. Chatham Township ambulance squad provided rehab, and Marsh County air truck responded to the scene to refill all the cylinders. There were no injuries, and the Fire Department was back in quarters by 9:40 a.m. On Sunday morning, July 17, at approximately 2:30 a.m., Madison Fire Department, along with many other Marsh County Fire Departments, were dispatched to a working structure fire at 33 Bailey Hollow Road in Marsh Township. This house was situated up a steep driveway on a steep roadway, which was a challenge to get to. Madison firefighters were initially assigned as the RIC team, and then additional manpower arrived, were reassigned to the interior to help with extinguishing the fire. There were no injuries, and the Fire Department was back in quarters, cleaned up by 5:15 a.m. On Saturday morning, July 24, at approximately 9:55 a.m., the Madison Fire Department was dispatched to a reported odor of propane gas in the rear yard of Jaeger Lumber. The Fire Department found the large propane tank that is used for refilling smaller tanks leaking propane, and a visible vapor cloud was present around the tank and refill areas, a potentially explosive situation should the vapors find an ignition source. Propane gas is heavier than air and stays low to the ground. The Madison Police Department evacuated, stopped and chopped and secured, Madison Police Department evacuated, stopped and chopped, and then secured the area. The Fire Department deployed three hand lines with fog patterns to disperse the explosive vapor cloud. The winds were calm that morning, which didn't help in dispersing the vapors. While firefighters working in the hot zone had to be full turnout gear and use breathing air SCBA's. Due to the heat and humidity and manpower required to bring this under control, mutual aid was given to Madison Fire Department from Florham Park, Chatham, Chatham Township, Green Village, and Whippany Fire Department. Hazmat Team, Hazmat Team. Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps, the Chatham Volunteer Ambulance Corps, and the Marsh County Rehab Bus provided cool towels, water, and medical evaluations for the firefighters as they were rotated in and out of the hot zone. Suburban propane also responded to safe off the damaged hose line that was leaking at the conclusion of the incident. A rodent is believed to have chewed through the refill hose, which caused the leak. Madison Water Department responded in this incident, when the Fire Department started flowing water and had to turn on additional pumps as we flowed approximately 40,000 gallons of water to disperse the explosive vapors and protect the firefighters while working at the scene. Madison Fire Department personnel and the mutual aid departments, under the protection of hose streams, entered the hot zone to shut off the valve. They did this while the propane gas was still leaking. Very dangerous situation that was handled in a safe and professional and coordinated manner by all. After the propane valve was turned off and the vapors dispersed, we were able to break down and return all mutual aid at approximately 1:00 p.m. Seventeen Madison firefighters plus 34 firefighters from our mutual aid departments helped bring this potentially explosive incident to a safe conclusion. There was no injuries or loss of property. Chief DeRosa makes this statement. A great job done by all. I'm very proud of my personnel and of all who responded to this incident. Please be sure to thank the Madison Electric Department and the Water Department for their quick response and help in some of our recent incidents. It's a great assist to have in-house utilities and, of course, to the Water Department on this Saturday situation. There was also a thank-you note from the resident who was trapped in her car when a tree brought down live wires on it while she was driving on the Wanaka Way during a recent storm on June 10, with lots of thanks, and I don't blame her. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you for the awful report. Community Affairs, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. The DDC wants to thank the Department of Public Works employees Mike Morano and Russell Boardman for their help in installing the 2016 MACHA DDC Sidewalk Gallery. It's now installed. It features 18 unique works of art painted by nine very talented artists. The paintings will be auctioned off at the Art Gala, an auction scheduled for Saturday, November 5. And please take time to go downtown and check it out. The DDC would also like to thank the DPW for the recent work done weeding and refreshing the mulch in the tree wells in downtown. That also looks very nice. The Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, the DDC Downtown Concert Series continues this Friday, July 29, with Rosewood. The Downtown Concert Series Friday evening, family-friendly concerts are held outside on the lawn of the museum, where there is picnicking, and it's encouraged from 6 to 8 p.m. Guests are encouraged to spend time after the concerts in downtown Madison, where they can explore the town's many unique shops and restaurants. The rest of the schedule is August 12, the Barba Roja Latin Band, the August 26, Jumping the Gun Band, and September 9, Suicide Jazz. And Bottle Hill Day, we are passing a resolution tonight for 2016, will be Saturday, October 1. The family, this is a family entertainment, community celebration, which draws huge crowds to the heart of Madison. And there will again be four stages with live entertainment, 200 vendor booths, amusement rides, great shopping, delicious food, and a beer garden. We also have the 2016 Morrison Essex Kennel Club Match Show, and My Dog Fun Day will take place at Dodge Field on Bottle Hill Day. Also, as in the years past, the Madison Chamber of Commerce and Madison PBA 92 will be hosting their popular annual Madison Car Show in conjunction with Bottle Hill Day. And Bottle Hill Day is free and open to the public, and vendor applications and sponsorship packets are now available on the DPW page on the RoseNet. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, from the Engineering Department, the roads. Milling and paving work was completed by PSENG last week on both Buckingham and Canterbury Roads. The road conditions there have now improved greatly as a result. Seafellian Sun Constructions have nearly completed the work on the 2016 Road Improvement Contract, with the exception of milling and paving. PSENG has also completed their gas main replacements on West Streets, West Street, rather, and expects to be done with Kenny Street this coming week. And finally, from roads downtown, plan of reconstruction is progressing. The capstone installation is planned for this week. From the Sewer Department, or covering the Sewer Department, both the North Street Pump Station and sanitary sewer inspection and repair bids are due tomorrow. In parks, Voller Construction has started fencing the area that will be worked on in the Danforth Road Sports Field Site Remediation Project, and excavation work will commence later this week. In terms of the Memorial Skate, Memorial Park skating rink and fields, two contract warnings have been sent to the contractors who ceded the fields, the field, rather, we need additional work before the service will be playable in September. We're waiting for a final note from the state in terms of the letter of interpretation for the Memorial Park area, but we're now expecting the wetland buffers will be 150 feet in the forested areas and 50 feet in previously developed areas. And in terms of the, what Mr. Vogel's calling private construction, sewer replacement work completed by Kushner Real Estate Contractor, which effectively doubles the capacity of the sewer on Kings Road, is about 70% done. We expect it to be reopened again this week. And from our Building Department, their quarterly update, they continue to have a high level of activity, and it's year-over-year, numbers are outpacing last year's by 10 to 20%. In the first six months of the year, they've generated over half a million dollars in revenue, issued almost 400 permits, performed 800 inspections, and serviced approximately 400 opel requests. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
None received.
Now, we're on our first of two invitations for discussion from the public. This one is limited to items on our agenda discussion, which include the Summer Hill Park Trail Restoration and the Hillcrest Triangle plaque dedication. And you also may comment or ask questions on any resolution item. The ordinances will have hearings, and you'll have an opportunity to comment on those, or you can wait until our, further down the agenda, when you can comment on anything. Anyone in the public wishing to ask questions or comment on the agenda items, please step And as you step up, please state your name, your address, and the agenda item you are commenting on. And welcome back, Sam.
I just want to touch on Resolution 227. Can you explain that one for me? That, we're finally going to do something over the east wing? What do we?
Okay, that's the Resolution accepting the grant from Morris County, so it's a two-part thing. One, it is, part one is outside, the plaza work that needs a lot of work, so, and this is, and then also design work on the east wing. The county is only supporting the plaza work, but the ordinance that will be introduced will be covering the cost for east wing and plaza.
The, just for concepts, or what is going over, what is eventually going to be at the east wing? Do we have any?
Yeah, it's preparing for actual construction and to-
The architect and?
Yes. And it will be, to be announced at a later date, who may go in there, but as you know, it's empty space, and we want to have it usable.
So we don't, we don't know what's going to go in there yet?
There are possibilities, but it's too early to discuss it.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to ask questions on anything on the agenda? Seeing none, we move on to our agenda discussions. Summer Hill Park Restoration and Morris County Trail Construction Grant Program, Austria.
Thank you, Mayor. The county has now opened up their county open space and historic preservation, well, their county open space money to trail construction and restoration. And we looked at Summer Hill Park. We had always intended when we purchased the property around Luke Miller that we would try to get trails up to the Luke Miller House from Summer Hill Park. Sandy also did some damage in Summer Hill Park. Summer Hill Park is underutilized. It's, we need a parking area, and that can all be incorporated in this grant. So the first step is to have a letter of intent by, and with the council supporting it by resolution. What you didn't receive in your packet, which was, apparently came out this Friday, was Bob Vogel's approximate cost for this project. So that was before you, at your table on executive, and it's approximately, he's got it at $100,000, and it would be a 20/80 match. We'd be asking the county for 80% of that cost, and the other 20% would come from our open space trust fund.
Any questions or comments? Okay, that is Resolution 229, which is on the consent. Thank you very much. Hillcrest Triangle, and that one is mine. As you know, last year, through the generosity of Cardinal Landscaping, the triangle at the entrance of Hillcrest was re-landscaped with beautiful flowers, benches, and a little pedestal with a sundial. It's also being maintained by Cardinal Landscaping. When we had the ribbon cutting for it, one of the neighbors suggested that it'd be lovely to have a plaque recognizing one of the longtime residents of the neighborhood, Larry Tabor, and, which I thought was a very good idea, so I'm proposing this, and would ask that we'd have donations to cover the cost, so it would not be a cost to the borough. The, we've, the plaque would go right on the pedestal for the sundial, and would recognize Larry Tabor, who, 80 years in Madison, well, pretty much his family moved here when he was born, who was avid gardener, so it's very appropriate to recognize him at this spot. He was a dedicated Madison volunteer, including serving as a town historian, many years at Historic Preservation Committee on the Housing Authority, and also Shea Tree Management Board. Also a very strong supporter of the library. So that is the proposal, is to go ahead and solicit donations and then try to make it happen. The final wording of the plaque will be in that general area, but maybe, maybe changed as we get closer. Questions, thoughts?
Great ideas.
Go for it.
All right, we'll move forward, and then when we have money raised, we'll come back with a formal resolution. Thank you. There are no ordinances for hearing. We move on to round two of invitation for discussion. This is when you may come up and comment on anything. Again, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward.
This is my son, James Cremins, from the aforementioned Luke Miller House. Wanted to talk about the memorial, I'm not sure what the official name of the park is, but Memorial Park, where the veterans, where the eagle is, and the veterans have bricks.
The James, James, part of James Park area, yep.
Well, before I, before I get into what I wanted to talk about, I think that the job that was done there was outstanding. My family took out, you know, two bricks, one for my father-in-law, one for me, but the whole, the whole area, I think, is dignified, and an excellent job was done there. So-
Sure. So, a year ago, my son left for West Point-
So, a year ago, my son left for West Point. And so, over the past year, we've been privileged at the Luke Miller House to host dozens of cadets, which I've been, I feel privileged to have done, even as an Annapolis grad. So I harassed them a lot, but, but nevertheless, we've, we've hosted dozens of cadets. But there was one cadet in particular who would come home with James, I would say 10 times to Madison over the past year. His name was Tom Sirdike. And he, he's from the St. Louis area. Madison sort of became his home over the past year. You'd be surprised how often cadets, as plebes at West Point, get to go somewhere, because the class of 1992 had the last real plebe year. But nevertheless, Madison sort of became the home for Tom Sirdike over the past year. And I don't know whether people read, you know, our friend and Madison resident Bill McGurn's article in the Wall Street Journal, but Tom passed away a couple of weeks ago getting swept out to sea by a riptide in Southampton. So, you know, and a lot of people in Madison got to know Tom. Tom went to church at Saint Vincent Martyr. Tom hung out with James, with kids who went to Madison High School, a lot of adults, et cetera. So a lot of people got to know Tom. So when, when this happened to Tom, Julia, my wife, said to me, we should get Tom a brick at Memorial Park, at James Park. So I emailed Mr. Cody, who, who recommended that I contact Mayor Dunn, which I did, and Mayor Dunn said that there were two rounds of getting these bricks, but that most of the people on this committee were getting, getting on in life a little bit, and they were, they were sort of done with their rounds. But that they had already had 50 requests for new bricks, which weren't going to be able to be taken care of, at least at this point, and, and that he hoped other people would come forward and, and start a committee to have future rounds. And I just think that, that, I don't know whether it's every one year, or every two years, or whatever, James Park should be opened up to fresh rounds of, people pay their $70, or whatever it is, and, and get bricks for veterans who are associated with Madison. I'm, I'm not here to volunteer today, although it's something that I would consider, but I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the mayor and the council that I think, I think that that should be an ongoing enterprise. Obviously, it would be too much of an administrative burden that every time somebody wants a brick, you take their money and get them a brick. But if, on a recurring basis, every year, or every two years, or whatever it is, there was a round of opening up the park for new bricks, I would certainly like to get one for Cadet Tom Sirdike, who, by the way, based upon the testimony of the person he got swept out to sea with, he won the Soldier's Medal, which is the highest medal for bravery in the Army, not in, not in contact with the enemy, because he kept the other kid afloat. So I'd like to get one for Tom, but just as a more general point, to the extent that new veterans, you know, come along, and, and that could get opened up on a recurring basis, I would be interested. So I just wanted to raise that to the mayor and council.
Tom, thank you. Great, great idea. Carmella, do you want to take that back to the Patriotic Celebrations Committee? And we'll get back to you, and we won't put you as chair, but we'll take you up on your offer to help out.
That's good, thanks.
And thank you for your service to our country. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Sam, Cersei Allen Park Avenue, Madison. I don't want this to come off as sour grapes or something, but, well, I'm going to ask one question first. Somebody can, I think, I think you can answer. When, when there's a project in town, or something going on, what is, what is the town, without going out for bids, how much could they go up to? I know, like, I've done work for the Board of Ed, I've done work for the housing, they can, they can spend up to $15,000 without going out for bids. I was just wondering, how much is the Board of Madison, without going out for bids, how much could you give a contractor something?
3,000 for bids, but 17.5.
Pay-to-play.
Pay-to-play.
Okay, so there's a couple different numbers. Under 6,000, you're a qualified purchasing agent here. Under $6,000, you don't have to have quotes, okay? Over 17.5, although you still, you, you hit the pay-to-play number, and you're required to have a, they refer to as a business registration certificate, actually, anything over 6. Then up to 40,000, you can, you can do without formal bids, but you have to get at least two quotes. Best practice is three quotes. And anything over, because you're a municipality, if it's construction, anything over, is it 15 now? You have to pay prevailing wage, would be the numbers that, unfortunately, all the numbers are all over the place.
Okay. I want to talk about the, the plan in the center of town where the clock is. How much is that, how much does that cost in the town?
It is over the pay-to-play threshold, over the 17.5 threshold. They don't have the number in front of me here, Sam, but that does require, as, as John was saying, the contract to have a business registration certificate with the state to be eligible for the project. And it's a challenge, because you don't have that many contractors in town that, that have that, so.
You need the Public Works Contractor Certificate in addition to the BRC.
So, so over, just to clarify, so over and above the various thresholds is this requirement?
I understand. Can I, can I ask, how much did the job cost us?
I don't have that number here, Sam. I think it was just above that threshold. I think it was about 18,000.
How many people actually bid it on that job?
I believe they got three quotes.
So, three quotes from?
Three qualified.
From those with the, that were registered.
They'd have a registration, a BRC, and since it's over the 15, that would be prevailing, that would pay prevailing wage.
Well, let me give you, and again, like I said, I don't want this to come off like I'm sour grapes or something, but I'm a local contractor. I thought, I donated the sundial in this, in town that you're talking about, the sundial, that was donated by my, me and my company. I donated the two dugouts on Rosedale Avenue. I donated the two snack shacks on Rosedale Avenue. I mean, we have a lot of local contractors in town. And I just feel that, I'm, I'm a licensed contractor, I got insurance, I got, I'm a, you know, I don't, why, were any of these tree contractors from local?
Yeah, I don't have that information, Sam. I know Mr. Cody and Russ Brown were working on it. All local, maybe not Madison-based. We do have a significant number of work that we award to Madison-based businesses, window washing contracts, custodial services. We do a significant amount of business with Jager Lumber and Hardware, with Alfred-
I understand, I understand.
Landscaper Services, the work that was done at Rosedale, with tree work with Ernie Nash, so, and, and Honor Tree. So we do do it, we, we do do a significant amount of work with local contractors, local businesses.
You know, the, you know, this Love Madison, Shop Madison, I just wish that, you know, again, like I said, doesn't, you got, you got three or four good local contractors that capable of doing that. And my biggest problem is that I don't understand, being in the business all my life, if you're saying to spend over 17,000, or whatever it is, there was, there was nothing wrong with that whole thing. The only thing that was wrong with the whole situation was these things called the rollock. That's the brick that goes on the edge, like this. It's the worst thing they, they could do. All we had to do was take the rollocks off and put stone, and that's what he's going to do. I had no, I didn't understand why they had to rip it down to the footings again and spend all that money. You're talking about maybe a $4,000, $5,000 job. You didn't have to waste all that money to rip it all down, because there was nothing wrong with the guts of the whole thing. It was just the rollocks that were popping off. They were putting them back on, they were popping off. So all they had to do is what they're going to do now, put a stone all around the top of the thing. I mean, to me, that was a waste of money. And again, like I said, I go back to this Love Madison, Shop Madison, I just wish that, you know, we, we use the local, local contractors more. Now, the other thing that's bothering me, and I'm going to restate it again, because I did it four or five times in the past, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on these roads. Believe me, we're not getting the first-class job. Kenny Street and West Street, that's where I live, and I have my little dog, Rocky, and I walk him two or three times a day. And I watch this contractor, Sevillian Suns, that's the job, nobody's watching it. I think I told you this about the Belgium blocks, you know, they got to be four inches in concrete, four inches of a wash in the back, four inches of topsoil. We didn't even come close to getting any of that. I could kick over some of those Belgium blocks, they're in the concrete about one inch. No washes in the back. And the worst part is, when they dug, they put the Belgium block in, they got all the clay and the rocks, and they use that same dirt to push it, to put back on the back of the Belgium block, and they put about one inches of topsoil. It's, it's a shame, I just don't understand, there's nobody watching where we're spending all these, this money. And I, I have a problem understanding why, you know, the council people not, why can't you just maybe take a, when the contractor's gone, just take a ride, look, look and see what I'm talking about? I'm telling you, right here on Cross Street, same situation. This guy flew through these jobs. I don't understand why we're paying for filet mignon, and we're getting chuck steak. It's, it's wrong. And this, second or third time, I'm telling you this, and there's, like I said, there's no reason why he's, when the, at the end of the night, or someone, the contractor, just walk around, take you two minutes, park your car, and I'll show you. If you have any problem understanding what I'm saying, I'll be glad to show you what I'm talking about. We're not getting our money's worth on this contract. My time is up, Bob?
Yeah, and then some, but I gave you a little leeway, you're a little out of practice.
I'm going to leave you with a good note, though. In three months, everything's going to be right. Trump is going to straighten everything all out.
So we, we do, our engineering department does monitor the projects, and the council's responsibility is not to release the full funding of any project until it is, everything on the punch list has been completed. So we will make sure we follow, follow through on those projects. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for August 8th, 2016. Will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available members of the public requesting copy.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 54, 2016, ordinance to the Borough of Madison appropriating $14,500 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to purchase 12 new signs for various parks.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 54-2016.
I second the motion.
And Paul Laco is here to answer any questions on, on that. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 55, 2016, ordinance to the Borough of Madison appropriating $75,000 from the Electric Capital Utility Improvement Fund for traffic signal and call box improvements.
I move ordinance 55-2016.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And ordinance 56, 2016, ordinance to the Borough of Madison appropriating $150,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for construction documents and professional services for the east wing of the Hartley Dodge Memorial Building.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 56-2016.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions, will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
I move Resolution 223-2016 and 2 through 225, 2016. Resolution 226, 2016, has been pulled, so I continue thereby to, to move Resolution 227-2016 through 233-2016.
234, we, we had the-
Oh, I'm sorry, 234, 2016, stand corrected.
Which was posted. Second.
Second.
Any discussion, any need to be pulled?
Can we, I have a question on 229, please. And I probably should have brought this up at the beginning. I apologize.
That's all right. Do you want to pull it separately? We'll-
Yes, please.
Okay, so we will vote on the consent minus 229. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Motion for Resolution 229-2216.
Move. Second.
Yes, rep?
Okay, so, the letter, the grant that we are requesting for the trail construction at Summer Hill Park, will that be enough, will the grant in itself be enough to satisfy the expenditures?
What?
So, so, yes.
We'll submit, we'll submit a grant for $100,000, which will be 80% funded by the county, 20% funded from open space, so-
From our open space?
Yeah.
Okay, so, again, so now, considering the news about some grants that we had requested that were not fully funded, I'm concerned that the open space fund will be overly taxed in terms of resources. So I'm wondering why, you know, how's it all going to play out if certain groups that were looking for funding through grants, leveraging money that was coming out of the open space fund, and they didn't get the grants, come back and ask us for more money? What, what are we going to do?
I would assume the intent is that we would not move forward the project until we get the funding.
This is, this is, first of all, this is just a first step, that we're, we're just sending them a letter of intent that we'll ultimately put together the grant. You and the rest of the council will vote on the grant when it comes before you. This is just the letter of intent that we're putting them on notice, that we're going to fill out this grant application and bring it before the council. But then we will, we will discuss it and we'll know more, but, but, that being said, they're two different pots. The one that gave us only half for Hartley Dodge Memorial and the Museum of Early Trades came from the Historic Preservation Trust Fund. This is from the open space trust fund, which is totally different.
No, 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 no. We, we fund, we fund, I'm sorry, if I'm not mistaken, we, the money that we were giving to the museum came out of open space.
No, no, but the, so for, our share, same pot, county share, two different pots.
Correct.
Historic versus open-
Right, but, but they didn't get the money from the county that they wanted.
Right.
So they're going to, so, so, when I, you know, fearing that that would happen, and the reason I voted against funding it, because lack of a plan, they're going to turn back to us and ask us for more money.
They're actually, the borough has, is not, at this point in time.
Not what?
The borough is, the borough is not asking the-
No, no, the open, no-
To fund the $100,000 for the construction.
But, but, but I'm sure that they're going to, I mean-
The museum-
The museum's not going to go back and ask for that extra money.
That's, that's a different discussion, so-
No, but what I'm saying is, if, if we may have to fund that-
That, that's what, that's what-
Will we have enough to fund that and this?
That's what this body needs to decide. I, I think most likely the timing is-
So the further on, the further question then is, if we do send this grant application down, and the county says, yeah, sure, and then at the last minute we say, well, we don't want to fund it, because we're out of money, what happens to us?
I think we're probably looking at 2017 timing on this, as far as, so-
And our contribution's 20,000.
Right, but we're using up a lot of that open space, especially if we're, instead of giving 150 a year, we're going to have to give 250 to the museum.
I, I think probably this body, as it's done before, would put a priority on the four-to-one funding source, you know?
Never happened.
No, in the, in the, no, in the, maybe not at that ratio, but certainly, I, I think 20,000 to get-
We'll look at the arithmetic.
100,000.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the museum, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. My questions are satisfied.
General capital, too. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business? Approval of vouchers?
Public Safety, $25,056.17. Health and Public Assistance, $6,209.36. Public Works and Engineering, $108,298.16. Community Affairs, $16,086.54. Finance and Borough Clerk, $3,459,010.62. Utilities, $896,492.86. The total is $4,511,153.71.
Mr. Mayor, I move the vouchers.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no new business?
And with that, I move adjourn.
August 8th, and there is no second meeting in August.